You heard?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't get an invitation, but I'm not.
Forward my.
No, I was gonna say.
No, I'm certainly not. It gets me out of brace for like one. I've been gliding.
Yeah.
The sl- yeah. Well, I wasn't worried anyway. But if it was going to bring me more gliding, sure.
Where was the next?
I gotta go on a heavy air on my own. Yeah.
Well, someone did. Oh, yes, yes.
Drive was in the woods.
Pardon?
Drive was in the woods.
Hi. Good morning.
Those were one after the other.
He wants to know what day he's going to be.
Those are usually after the order.
Usually, and it's so cute.
It's farther down.
Yes, yes.
You should know that.
One hundred percent.
No question.
Try to get answers.
All right. Okay, we're gonna reconvene our open session. And I'd like to ask trustee Prendergast to report out actions taken in closed session.
Thank you, trustee Jamal. We have two actions to report on. First is, on a seven to zero vote, the board denied a part-time faculty's appeal of an administrative determination seeking, or alleging discrimination, sorry. And then the second one is, on a seven to zero vote, the board approved a settlement agreement in lieu of a layoff for a classified manager. That is it.
All right, thank you for that. We'll now have the invocation led by me and the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Lang. All right. So, I think we'll keep it simple tonight. There's a lot going on in the world, a lot of noise. Can comment on a lot of things and probably unite no one, so I thought I'd keep it simple. I've been part of the district for nearly six years now. And I think in every invocation I've given, I've talked about how fortunate we are to be part of this amazing community college district with incredible support from the residents here. And we are really fortunate. Sometimes as a board and as a district, we have to make tough decisions. But let's keep it in context. We have it pretty good here. We have the resources to hire the best and brightest to give our students the education they need to move on to the next phase of their lives. So next week is another milestone for us. We're gonna welcome a new chancellor. We certainly have challenges, including a new funding formula and an online community college that will affect many of the colleges across the state. Change is inevitable. It will occur. It's difficult to confront sometimes. But at some point, you're gonna have, we will have to embrace it. And I ask all of you, and us as well as the board, let's continuously think of ways that we can do our jobs better and to serve our students the best we can. Thank you very much.
Please join me as we salute the flag to this great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any requests for public comments? I'm seeing none. We'll now move to our board reports. And I'm, which way did I start last time? All right, we're gonna, we're gonna start with trustee Witt.
Mine is easy. I took a vacation. It was quite a difference from May, where we had, all of us had at least one or two functions a night for, what, 20 days? Not complaining, had a great time. But I hope you all had experience of having some relaxation between our board meetings.
Okay, thank you very much. Trustee Wright.
Thank you. I also took a vacation. In fact, what we did, my wife and I now have been married for 50 years. So we took our children and our spouses and went down to Disney Orlando, down to Disney World. And it was a wonderful event where we were all together. We have 14 grandkids and they were, some of them were very upset because they couldn't go, but we just took our children and their spouses. There were eight of us, so that was a wonderful event. I just wanted to comment just for a minute on just a couple of events that I guess I was able to attend after the last board meeting. The one was that I attended the welcome dinner and reception for the Saddleback College commencement speaker, Martha Cantor. She did a wonderful job at graduation. I also, despite the interim, in Clement weather in the morning of May 24th here at Saddleback College, we had a wonderful, Saddleback College had a wonderful commencement ceremony. In total, they had over 2,000 people on the quad and then 362 students who graduated. And then the afternoon, we attended the, on May 24th, we attended the 33rd commencement ceremony at Irvine Valley College. I just wanted to commend our interim chancellor, Anna Marie Gable, for all that she's done in the last two months for us. She's done a wonderful job. And her board report is really outstanding, that she presented to us and to the board this evening. And then finally, I just wanted to, before closing, I wanted to also congratulate trustee Milchiker for earning a certificate of completion for the Community College League of California Excellence in trusteeship. I tried that program. I think I went to about four or five events, but I didn't go to all of them, so I still don't have a certificate. But she has earned a certificate, so congratulations to her.
Thank you for that. Trustee Prendergast.
Okay, so since you stole the commencement report, nice job. I have nothing else.
All right, it was easy tonight. All right, trustee Milchiker.
Okay, I'll take all of my colleagues' times. Since the last board meeting, I attended the Saddleback College Human Services graduation and trustee Witt was there with me. And both of us brought greetings from the board. That's a really wonderful commencement. And I've never missed a commencement, just like most of the board members at this college, or I've never missed a commencement at Irvine Valley or Saddleback College, and I've just about never missed the Human Services commencement. These are students that are going into the helping professions. They're going in to become drug rehabilitation counselors or eating disorder counselors. And when you go there, you realize that a lot of the people in the program, these students, have had problems themselves. And that's why they're going into the program. That's why they want to help others. That's why they want to pay it forward and not make a huge salary, but help others that have had the same problems that they have themselves. So they're very empathetic. And it's a commencement that's full of a lot of joy and a lot of tears, and it's always a very fun thing to attend. And we had two, as some of my board members have said, two dynamic commencement speakers. And we met with Martha Cantor, who is the former U.S. Undersecretary of Education. She's also the executive director of the Federal College Promise Program. And we met her prior to the, we had dinner with her prior to the commencement at Saddleback College. And she did a really fabulous job talking to students about what they should do in their future. Also, the commencement speaker at Irvine Valley College was Tyrone Howard, Dr. Tyrone Howard. He was a very dynamic speaker, and he also encouraged students to really make the best of their college careers and make the best of their lives. I was on Laguna Woods TV and Ken Goldenberg, who was the moderator, and I have this kind of banter going. And if you want to check it out, go onto YouTube and put in Marsha Milchiker, Laguna Woods TV on the YouTube channel, and it'll come up and you can watch it. I also took a tour of the greenhouse with the horticulture professor and teacher of the year, Ken Lee, along with Saddleback College president Jim Bucy and Joanne Higdon, the Saddleback College vice president of college administrative services, and got some ideas of what Ken has for the horticulture department. He's getting his students internships in the field, so they can get jobs in the field. And he has an idea of putting a therapeutic garden for our veterans and for all of our students. I also attended the District Services Ice Cream Social, and this was Anne Marie Gable's idea. And she's done a really fabulous job being interim chancellor. And this really was an opportunity for the district services personnel to all get together and meet each other, hear each other's names. She said she put out the notice that everyone was supposed to dress in Hawaiian dress, but she's the only one that dressed in Hawaiian dress. And that got a laugh. So brought people together and it was good for morale, and I thought it was a really good idea. So thank you so much for your services as interim chancellor, Anne Marie. Thank you. Chancellor Gable, sorry.
All right. Thank you, trustee Milchiker. I did attend both commencement ceremonies. Both were excellent. Speakers have been touched on. Actually, the rain didn't dampen things too much. And, no, I thought it was outstanding. And I think the movement to the outdoors worked really well. So we'll see if that continues. I think you get support from the board to do that. I also participated in a fun event, the golf tournament for the Saddleback College Athletics Department. And I hope it raised a lot of money for the foundation. And it was a lot of fun. I proved to hold my own against guys who are retired and golf four days a week. But in the best ball scramble, I think my tee shot got used a few times, so I held my own. And then, Anne Marie, thank you for stepping up the last two months. I think you've really done a good job stepping into this role and keeping us moving in the right direction. And I think Kathleen has some tough decisions, tough issues to deal with, but I think you ameliorated some of those tough issues before she arrives, and we appreciate that very much. All right, so trustee Jay.
Anne Marie, thank you for all that you've done for us. You've done such an excellent job. We really appreciate everything that you've done. And I attended the graduations and the dinners and went to 11 things last month. But this month, I did something that I thought was quite great. On June 12th, I attended the IVC Foundation Board of Governors meeting at IVC. Six new members were added to the Board of Governors. We had a presentation on the Irvine Valley Promise Program. The program will provide free enrollment, that's tuition, and textbooks to 26 high school students that are within the IVC service area. This is for a student that does not qualify for financial aid, but whose family income is very low. The program includes tuition, books, specialized academic and career planning with related support services, group counseling, transportation vouchers, access to laptop loan program, and support services to ensure maximum student success. Students must be at IVC full time. The Board of Governors voted to help support this program for three years, giving $10,000 from the foundation to help sustain this program. Scholarship ceremony recap. $430,000 was given to the students in scholarships. This turned out to be 657 scholarships given. A big thank you to Betty Jo Woollett for being the president of the Board of Governors for one year. What a wonderful, caring lady, and she did a superb job. Lisa Greenberg will be the new president of the Board of Governors for IVC. July 27th will be the Board of Governors Foundation's retreat at ATEP from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And that's it.
Thank you, trustee Jay. Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you. I also attended many of the same events as some of my colleagues have mentioned, so I won't bother to repeat those at all. I also want to add my kudos to the other board members for thanking our interim chancellor, Gables, for the outstanding job that she did in stepping up and taking the leadership role in our district, as well as the rest of the entire administration team, who I think does just a terrific job day in and day out. Like trustee Witt, I also got a chance to get away a little bit and spent some time at a family wedding function in Nashville, Tennessee, which was really nice to see people that I don't get a chance to spend as much time with. And there's nothing like being able to spend some time with my one-year-old grand niece, who is just starting to walk and talk, to put life in perspective. Wish everybody a Fourth of July holiday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. And some southern hospitality to boot, I'm sure, in Nashville. All right. Interim chancellor, Gable.
Yes, thank you. So briefly, I want to again thank the board for the opportunity to be interim chancellor. It has been a fun ride, but I am very happy to go back to my role on Monday, July 2nd, as the vice chancellor of business services. But I don't regret doing it. So thank you very much for the opportunity. It was fun. Commencement was excellent at both campuses. That is always my favorite day of year, and so I was very happy to be able to participate in commencement at both of the campuses. Another note, I would like to congratulate, I saw him here, Scott Ferguson-Green and his team. I don't know what happened to him, as well as, he's in the back.
He walks in right before his report.
Okay. Yeah. So anyway, his team, as well as Cindy Viskachilla and her team, for coming up with the tentative agreement for CSEA. Both of the teams worked tirelessly to get that done, and I think it's a very good agreement for both sides. So congratulations to both of them for that. And then, I won't cover everything in my board report. Majority of that was the new budget, but Kim is gonna be covering that tonight, our vice chancellor of business services, Kim McCord. But lastly, I do want to congratulate Marsha Milchiker. And this is time for a photo op. So I have a certificate here. It's a certificate of accomplishment issued by the Community College League of California to Marsha Milchiker for successfully completing the Excellence in Trusteeship Program. So Marsha, I have a pen and a certificate if we want to stand up and do a photo op.
Finally, after all these years, I can be called an excellent trustee. And trustee Wright, you can do it. It's not hard. You're so knowledgeable in everything. You can do it if you'd like to do it, I'm sure.
All right, yeah. Absolutely.
Okay, I should act a little. Okay, thanks. Make a whole night check.
Congratulations, Marsha.
Thank you so much.
I'm gonna move this.
If you can move those chairs, this might be a perfect location. Thank you so much. Thank you. Jenny, this is, this looks so pretty. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
And it's really not that hard if the other trustees want to do it. It's a CCCLC program, okay? Thank you.
All right. That was very nice.
Thank you.
So now let's move on to the college presidents' reports. Irvine Valley College, and we have Chris McDonald here for Glenn Rockmore.
Good afternoon. Based on the length of the agenda and the number of presentations, I'll limit my remarks to just saying a sincere thank you to interim chancellor Gable for her service and all that she's done for Irvine Valley College over the past couple of months. Thank you.
Jim Bice.
And for Saddleback College, I would like to thank all of you for attending the commencement ceremony on May 24th. We have received countless positive comments since then. And our planning committee has now met to review how it went and has committed to work on, you know, a few things that we can do better. It was the first time outdoors, and it was challenging as Mother Nature weighed in, but it worked and I think we'll even have a better commencement next year. Additionally, a local company, which doesn't really want any public recognition, has donated two robots equipped with stands and connecting cables required for operation. Once we determine a space on campus appropriate for this contribution, faculty and our advanced manufacturing program will be able to incorporate them into the instruction. This company has also contributed a $5,000 scholarship for STEM students, and these funds will be distributed in 2019. On the Health and Human Services front, I'd like to congratulate Esther Gravis, the interim assistant dean and director of nursing, as she successfully defended her dissertation at Case Western University, and will have her doctorate conferred at the end of the term. And finally, I'd just like to thank Anne Marie for her service as chancellor. And it's the first time we've had a chance to work together, although we've known each other for a long time, and it's been fun. And I look forward to continuing as you're back to the vice chancellor, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So next up, well, we have one student government representative from IVC, right? Welcome. There you go.
Hello. Yeah. Perry wouldn't be able to make it today. He's just had a little under the weather today. But seeing it's my first meeting, I thought it might be fit to do a little introduction. Well, my name is Matthew Osbrow. I'm a second-year student now, and I'm returning to ASG. This past year, I was chief justice on our judicial court committee, and we worked to help update existing bylaws as well as implement unprecedented ones to accommodate the new events we've been introducing this past year. I was fortunate enough to work alongside Evelyn Huang, and I'm also pretty proud to say that all committee members are returning to positions on ASG. Our committee also helped develop guidelines for homecoming, ASG at IVC elections, our ASG retreats, attendance, and the weekly office hours, as well as making some of the scholarship criteria bylaws, such as the Promise Program ones, as mentioned by trustee Jay. And working with ASG and the cabinets exposed me to the importance of cooperation and creating initiatives that most effectively meet the students' needs. For this month and the coming rest of summer, ASG is concerned with moving to the C-100 building. We are relocating our offices. And we have several members of our ASG committee from the last year that have been hired as student workers to help with that move. We're also extremely grateful to the IVC Foundation and administration for granting us this additional space. And it allows us a chance to help our growing student government, as well as study spaces for students. And we're also implementing computer labs, as well as a reflection room for students to find personal time there. And this upcoming year, I intend to promote close interpersonal relationships with everyone. I feel by having that interconnectivity between people, it can really help promote a streamlined and effective approach to ASG this coming year. As well, we hope to promote more of the cultural celebrations we had on campuses past year, such as homecoming and Fear Fest. I thought it really helped garner student pride and helped promote cultural competency as well. We're hoping to also work well more with Saddleback, helping to collaborate with the campus to meet the needs and issues that press both of the campuses. And I'm also very excited to work on the initiatives of Opt Out that we've introduced this past year. And I'm excited to be working with all of you next year, and I'm also excited for the possibilities that lie ahead. I'd also, Perry sent me his board report. If it'd be okay, I could present it on behalf of him, if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay. So for Saddleback's board report, Saddleback's ASG has been working on filling in positions on ASG. It's nearly complete with appointing their board of directors. Their ASGs continue to have meetings with different groups on campus throughout the summer as they plan for the upcoming school year. They enjoy working with the college's academic senate, classified senate, administration, faculty, staff, and other college partners in projects pertaining to the school year. They also have been working with Evelyn, the student trustee, and IVC's ASG on different ways they can work together to better advocate and represent the student body. And thank you.
Thank you for that, and thanks for covering. Welcome.
No problem.
Great to see you here.
I'm excited to start working with you all.
Likewise. We have two requests. Well, we have one request for a board report from two different trustees and two different items within the same report. Trustee Wright has requested a report on AD705. Trustee Prendergast has requested an update on the early college program. Is there a motion to approve this report? It's a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Milchiker. Do either of you want to speak to it, or just go ahead and vote? Okay. Yeah, you can.
I'm voting for it, yes.
Well, it's one report. Oh, I see. The board report is unanimously approved by seven to zero. Trustee, yes vote. We don't have a student advisory vote tonight. Okay, we have no discussion items. Let's move on to the consent calendar. Are there any polls? I have a poll.
I have a poll for 5.8 for clarification only.
Well, it's a poll.
Poll, yes.
Okay, any other polls? Is there a motion to move the balance of the items? There is. A motion from trustee Lang, a second trustee Wright. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. The balance of the items are approved by unanimous trustee yes vote. So let's go with you, trustee Witt, 5.8.
Yes, just clarification on 5.8. I believe that the answer will be yes, but when the RFPs come in, they will still come back to us for approval, and we will have a comparison of the cost by the eight vendors that you've decided on. Kim?
Yeah, that's correct.
Correct. Okay, just clarifying that. Thank you.
Okay, with that being clarified, is there a motion to move 5.8? There is, from trustee Witt, a second from trustee Milchiker. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. 5.8 is approved by unanimous trustee yes vote. Okay, 5.15 I polled. I want to recommend at this time that we not ratify the McCallum Group contract for state government relations. State government relations, our lobbying work in Sacramento is critical. Very supportive of having dedicated lobbyists in Sacramento. I think it's important for our district to have that. I think, though, at this time, it's, we should go out. I think, though, at this time, it's, we should go out for a public RFP and get bids and then move forward from there. And I believe the administration is supportive of this.
Yes, we would support that.
Oh, should we get... Okay, trustee Lang.
I noticed that the, this contract does expire on July 1st, so is there anything critical that may occur on the front, on this front, in which we might need lobbying efforts in the interim?
That's a good question.
So, the contracting question has a 30-day non-renewal clause or a 30-day out clause. So, what we would be doing is we would be issuing that request to cancel the contract tomorrow if the board were to vote on this, and so we would still be obligated to them for one month, and so we would still have them through the July, and then we would work as quickly as possible to get up and going with that RFP, to issue a new one, and then try to bring a request back to the board at the July meeting for a recommendation moving forward. It should be doable. Yes.
Trustee Prendergast.
This is just, I have something else, but just to help with that, I think it's important that the state budget just passed, so a lot of what they would be reporting on up until that point was important, but right now, it's kind of a lull, so I think it's actually good timing. But I was just, I think procedurally, I think you have to divide the question to make the motion on pulling that part out.
Okay.
So, just part of it in there.
All right. So, there's a motion to divide five point one five and pull out the McCallum Group contract from the item. So, we need to vote on doing that.
Right. You have to vote on dividing the question, and then, once that's, if that's approved, then you discuss them as separate items.
All right. So, there's a motion from trustee Witt, and a second from trustee Jay. I assume... We are. We are.
The vote right now is not on the item five point one five. The vote on the item right now is to divide the question, removing the McCallum contract.
Right.
So, I don't know how they have to do all that, but that's what we're doing.
Okay. All right. We'll go clarify the title. Okay, any other questions on it? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. We, well, this is a motion to divide the question.
We don't have a vote screen.
Yeah, there was a motion and a second, but they've been removed.
So, you need them to redo it? There you go.
There you go.
To divide.
Okay. All right. So, the motion to divide the question has been approved by a seven to zero trustee yes vote. So, it has been divided.
So, I'll make the motion to approve five point one five without the McCallum Group.
Okay. We have a motion from trustee Prendergast to approve the item without, with the removal of the McCallum Group contract from five point one five, a second from trustee Lang. Any other questions or discussions on this? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. The motion is approved by a seven to zero trustee yes vote.
Now, you need a motion to...
No, you just did it. You don't, because you already voted to approve the item.
You don't need a motion to put out the bid?
You just did it.
That, okay.
And so, just a point of clarification on that also. So, the board is aware that we will have the one-month contract with McCallum because it takes us 30 days. So, that contract will be in effect June or July 1 through July 31st.
And also...
Because we need 30 days to cancel it.
Correct. And when the RFP is reissued, all entities and firms and individuals are, would be eligible to apply for our lobbying, to provide lobbying services in Sacramento for us.
Correct.
It will be open.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. We'll now move on to our general action items. Six, yeah, six point one, the tentative budget for 2018, 2019. I think our acting vice chancellor of business services, Kim McCord, is going to make a presentation.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. I'll walk through the information. So, this is what's on the agenda. We're going to review our board philosophy and budget guidelines, the tentative budget data, the numbers on that, our budget assumptions, the basic aid allocation. We'll just briefly touch on that since it was approved last month, some budget trends and next steps. So, just a reminder, the tentative budget is just our draft budget. It's kind of our placeholder since we don't have the state budget adopted yet, and once that is complete, we'll use that to create our adopted budget and bring that back in August for you. So, our board philosophy on budget is we want to ensure wise and prudent use of public funds. I use this statement a lot when colleges sometimes question things or we're looking at documents. I always want to say, are we using the public resources effectively and responsibly? So, I like that that statement's on here. We do promote financial strength and stability and maximize the educational opportunities for our students. So, these are the budget development guidelines, just kind of the headers of them. One, our reserve for economic uncertainties. The state recommends 5% as a minimum, and of course, our board policy specifies 7.5%, which is very conservative and helps provide some strength for us. Future long-term debt issues. If we offer any debt, if we're going to go into any debt, we have to identify the source of the revenue for those. Our GASB OPEB trust, number six. As you know, we keep that fully funded, so we do that actuarial every year. And basic aid, of course, once we use the state funding formula, the remaining funds are what we use for our basic aid. So, that's just to highlight a couple of the items in our guidelines. They're all detailed in the budget book. So, this is a big picture of our total tentative budget. The first column are our beginning balances, which is 466 million. That sounds like a very large number. The big pieces, of course, are our capital outlay fund, 260 million, the majority of which are all allocated for projects. And of course, we have our retiree trust for OPEB, that's 116 million, and our pension trust has 35 million. So, those are the big chunks. But our unrestricted general fund is our operating budget. That's starting the year with 42 million estimated. So, that's our contingency that we had, our general contingency. It's also our basic aid contingency from this year. So, those are two big chunks, and the rest are just the ending balances that we expect to have of unspent funds from this year. The revenue is 261 million. The bulk of that, of course, is our property taxes. We did estimate a 3% increase in our property taxes going into the new year. That's on the conservative side. The county said it was probably going to be between three and five, so we always go on the low end of that. Expenditures of 276, so we expect to spend all of our funds, or at least we budget all of our funds for expenditures. The ending balance is really just our basic aid reserve and our reserve for economic uncertainties. So, this slide just kind of shows those first two columns, because when we talk about our district budget, we normally talk about our beginning balance plus the revenue and our total available fund. So, that's what that last column is. So, the 913 million is the number that we talk about is our entire district budget. Oh, I neglected it on the prior screen. We do have one new item this year that we hadn't shown before, and that's the Student Financial Aid Fund. We always have had the fund. We've always paid student financial aid. We just didn't actually show it in our budget here. So, chancellor Gable brought that to our attention, and we added it in there this year. So, you'll be seeing that from now forward. The screen shows all the expenditures by category. So, our biggest expense, of course, is salaries and benefits in our operating budget. That's at about 87.9% of our budget for the unrestricted general fund. And, of course, services and supplies and capital outlay are much smaller categories. The payments to students and other uses, that includes our transfer from the general fund to the capital outlay fund for our basic aid expenditures. So, that's why that's such a large number. And of course, you'll see the financial aid dispersments at the very bottom. So, it's a lot of information here, so we can, if there's questions on this later. So, here's some of our assumptions. This is based on the May revise for the governor's budget. We don't have the things that have happened in the last few weeks, because, of course, this was prepared and set several weeks ago. SB 361 did have a COLA of 2.71%, so we've added that to our operating budgets. There's no growth being budgeted at this time. And again, the property tax revenue is a 3% increase, and luckily, the enrollment fees are still staying at $46 for our students. Now, on the expenditure side, salary increases. We always have our step and column increases, but we're in the middle of negotiations. I think we may be wrapping up one of those. Those are not included in the budget yet, so as they complete, we'll get them updated, and hopefully, they'll all be done in time for our adopted budget. We all know STIRS and PERS rates are increasing, so these are the rates for the current year. We expect those to go up at least for the next three or four years, and there's another slide on those later. Health and welfare, amazingly, we estimated it at 1.4%. We got the final numbers. It's actually going to be 0.7%, which is probably the lowest increase I've ever seen in health and welfare from year to year. So, our main plans actually had zero in dental, zero in vision, zero on our PPO. So, it's just the HMOs had slight increases, and we have some rate locks on some of the life insurance and our Hyatt legal as well. So, we did a really good job and hope to keep that going. Unemployment's still extremely low, flat rate. We've had that for years. And workers' comp was 1.7. We expect that to go down a little bit for the adopted budget as well, because we've had really good experience with our workers' comp. Our 7.5% reserve is 13.8 million. We did have some rebates from prior years on our property and liability plan, so we've lowered what we need to budget for this year. Our categoricals are in there at 95%. And our EPA fund is still budgeted at 2.7. It'll probably be a little bit lower at adopted, because we get $100 per FTES, and our numbers are down just a tiny bit. And just a reminder, we budget those for part-time faculty salaries and benefits. This is a summary of basic aid funds. I'm not going to go into much detail. We went into the big presentation on that last month that you all approved, but basically, we allocated 83 million. We have our reserve of 13.8 million. Here's again a summary of all the projects that were approved, the biggest one being the capital project is the ATAS building, so that'll get moving. 10 million on our district technology, and of course, we fund our OPEB trust out of this, the very first line. Some of the budget trends. You know, we do kind of conflict with our guideline in that we do use our one-time funds or ending balances to balance our budget, and a lot of that is our ongoing expenses. So, we really need to find a way to balance our budget with just the revenue and use the beginning balances for one time. And I know within our budgets, we have some one-time pieces, but we haven't actually tracked to make sure we're separating those out. Personnel costs are 87.9%, which is a large number. It's down from last year. I think that's because of the retirement incentive. We're still filling positions, but it is a high number and does limit our flexibility. And state COLAs and growth have just not kept up with all of our personnel costs, which is next screen. Oops, one more, we'll show. So, upward trends in health and welfare. Luckily, that was super low this year. STIRS and PERS, we're all well aware of. And then the salaries, we have our negotiated increases, step and column, and stipends and additional payments. So, this slide, the bar chart represents the increases for personnel costs. So, the bottom item is our health and welfare increases. The second item, the blue one, is our negotiated salary increases, the orange being our step and column, and the top kind of lime green is our PERS and STIRS. So, these costs have been going up overall at a higher rate than our income is going up. So, the bar, the line chart is our revenue change from year to year. So, there's been a couple of years where it's been higher than the negotiated salary increases or the personnel cost increases, but overall, the six years at the bottom, you can see they've gone up 8.87% and revenues have only gone up 5.8%. So, this is a trend that's rather concerning to us. This is just another view, those changes in revenues in the blue and the green being the changes in total expenses, not just the personnel costs. So, you can see most years, they're fairly close, but in 1516, we did have quite a large difference. This represents our FTES at each college. So, Saddleback's been fairly stable. IVC did grow a bit in 1617 and have brought that down with some efficiencies, but overall, we're all below our target that we've been maintaining the last few years. So, some of our next steps and our challenges, we do need to find out how we can get our revenue increases to keep pace with all of our ongoing cost increases. We have to monitor the STIRS and PERS enrollments. We haven't really monitored or managed enrollments on a district-wide basis, and I think we need to start collaborating on some of that. And the one-time revenue being used for ongoing expenses, so we need to keep an eye on that. This is our PERS and STIRS chart, so we have updated it. The STIRS rates, I think, are a little bit lower in the outgoing years. They've gone down just slightly. PERS, though, is still going much higher, but overall, this is still a big concern. We do have the stability fund that should cover these costs through '21, '22, but nothing beyond that. So, we will have to address it at some point. Otherwise, it's a $12.8 million annual increase that we won't be prepared for. So, we'll have to address that at some point. We hope the state budget information should be out any minute. I mean, I think the houses have agreed, so hopefully, the governor will get that out and not redline a bunch of things. The new funding formula, that was in the chancellor's report, it's a three-year phase in with those categories of enrollment, low-income enrollment, and performance outcomes. It's going to be '70, '20, '10, and then over the three years, get to '60, '20, and '20. The nice part is there's three years of hold harmless, not just one that they initially set, and that does include the cost of living each year, so that will help us. And we'll need to have our DRAC meetings this fall to determine how we're going to implement the new funding formula and how that's going to impact how we create our budgets for our colleges. And then we'll be kicking off our educational strategic master plan, so that will also help drive a lot of our budget. Okay. That was a lot of information. Are there questions?
Thank you for that, Kim.
Sure.
Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I just, I want, thank you very much for the report. That was very concise and helpful. I just want to commend the district as a whole when it comes to healthcare costs, the fact that we came at 0.7. I don't know if a lot of people are aware that it's basically user-driven, and it's a culture. It's a culture of not overusing the healthcare, but yet maintaining healthy lifestyle. And so, it speaks volumes that we would come in that low, because coming from a district where the culture is the opposite, where everyone, hey, we get this many visits, I'm going to take that many visits, and then our increases are 14% every year. And training that culture has been a tough road in that district. So, this district is doing an amazing job across the board, so keep it up.
And our benefits committee, which is a collaborative group of both bargaining units, we meet and go over all of these costs every year.
I've been on those committees, and I can tell you how much fun they are when it's not going well. So, I keep it going. That's awesome.
Who's your insurance carrier in your district?
Uh, we're, uh...
Not Blue Shield, is it?
No, it's Anthem.
Anthem, okay. Thanks.
I think, it goes back and forth between Anthem and Aetna. One gives us a little bid, and then they take it, and everyone has to change doctors, and it's no fun. But, yeah, no, it's very, very nice to see that across the board, people don't abuse and they shop. You know, it's a big thing, difference between going to an emergency room versus a walk-in clinic. It could be thousands of dollars, and we have a culture of, oh, I'm sick, I'll go to the emergency room. And it's like, why? So, it's good.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you, Kim. Great presentation, as always. Appreciate the work that you do there. The one question that I have is, and I talked to our interim chancellor about this today, is that I, I guess I did not, I didn't realize that we were not truing up the actual versus budgeted FTES, which was one of the causes, as I understand it, as to how we got sideways with the established board guidelines. And I'm wondering how that happened. I guess I don't remember the board taking specific action that would have authorized that. Maybe you can help me out here.
Sure. Well, one of the things you have to remember is districts can choose which year they record summer in, and so many districts will use that summer to help them grow one year, and then the next year, when they don't report summer, they go in stabilization, and that's a legal practice that a lot of districts use. And we have been doing that somewhat. So, we had kind of inflated one year, and they'd be lower one year. We actually, we normalized the FTES that we're showing now by just showing summer, fall, and spring to really compare year-to-year productivity, not because when you report it to the state, up and down, it's really hard to keep track of how we're really producing. So, we just stopped that practice. So, even though we were up and down, we were kind of meeting that target for a while, because we would meet it and then be in stability, and then meet it and be in stability. So, we just stopped that two years ago, and now it's coming to where it shows we're not meeting that target. We are addressing that in the DRAC committee, though. We... We did have a prior change in the practice that was fixing one problem, and it kind of had an unattended consequence that now is showing up. And so, we are working that with the DRAC committee, and we will address it as we do the new funding formula.
Okay. Well, would some of that perhaps involve just not having a, you know, if the college budget were completely upside down, seems to me that that would get reflected in the beginning balance that would be going into the subsequent year, but we don't appear to be seeing that here.
Right. I think it was the way we were distributing our funds. So, there's two factors. One is how much money do we have to distribute? And that, again, was that how many FTES and the stability that we were doing. So, our pot's bigger than it should be if we were just following the summer, fall, spring FTES, but the other is how we divvy up the pot. And so, we used to use targets. And at one point, we said, we did that because one school was growing beyond their target, and we didn't want to give them credit for that. So, they said we should use targets. But then what we didn't realize is it wasn't taking into account actuals which were below the targets. So, that's what we switched two years ago, and it's now truing up and evening things out between the colleges.
Okay. Well, we'll have further discussions about this.
It's a complicated issue. We'll be definitely working on it with DRAC.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Lang, trustee Witt.
Yes, Kim, excellent presentation, excellent. I'm just curious, back to the health and welfare benefits, and I understand that TJ did address that, you know, our staff and faculty are going to maybe urgent cares instead of the ER. But what did your health and welfare benefits committee, did they identify the number-one assumption of what, you know, what caused that change within our staff?
We didn't. These were just the renewal rates that we got. Now, we belong to CISC, which is the Self-Inured Schools of California, and that is a huge pool. It has a large number of the school districts, K-12 and community college up and down the state. So, being part of a big pool also helps us. So, I don't know if everybody's renewal rates were that low. I do, they look at our experience as well, but I think overall, that group is being managed really well. And so, maybe the overall rates could have been one and a half, and we got 0.7 because we're even on the better side. I didn't actually ask that of the consultant, we were just so thrilled when we saw the rates.
Right.
And we do maintain the plan. That does come up every year. Sometimes they recommend small changes, like they want to up the ambulance fee, and we say, no, we don't want to up our ambulance fee, and so they'll adjust our rate because of that. But this year, everything came in with no changes.
Okay. I was just wondering if it really was a function of us or is it the whole?
It's a combination of the two. I think if our experience were really bad, we could have had a higher rate than the general pool of CISC.
Yeah, because now I make phone calls, I don't go in. I just use that telephone number, and it's great. Okay, thank you.
Glad to hear you're using that.
Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
I just kind of want to go back to trustee Lang's point is the FTES. Who's determining that number that they need for their budget? Is it the colleges themselves or is it a committee? Like, I'm trying to kind of grasp, understanding his point here of, is there an incentive at all to get it right? Like, to not overestimate, so you get more money in your budget and then you don't need it, or you lower it and then you need help at the end? Like, where can we tighten up that projected FTES to be closer to what the actual winds up being, so we don't have to borrow and we don't have to, we're not overfunding as well?
It's not so much a projection as the target. It's historical, so we had a target that we were meeting, and every year, when there was growth available, we would add growth. And it just, over time, one school, Saddleback, wasn't quite meeting their target, and because they started shifting summer to meet their target, at some point, it just, they were shifting, they were almost counting two summers in one year to meet the target. So, that became unattainable to maintain it. It is a slippery slope sometimes to play that game of shifting. I was actually excited that the state was going to have no shifting allowed, and then they took that part out of the budget. So, I mean, it does help schools, if you're really close to reaching your growth target, you can just shift a little summer FTES and then figure out the next year how to gain it. It's a good opportunity, but it is, you have to be careful with doing that because it can get you in trouble.
So, but the state determines the growth number, right?
Correct, and we are at a minimum half a percent, which, because we really don't have, the factors they use don't allow us to grow more than half a percent. It's the bare minimum they give any district.
Lately, it's been zero, right?
Right. Well, we've been adding zero to our budget because we're already funding more than what we're producing.
Okay.
And that's why that growth has been zero the last couple of years.
Right. All right, perfect.
Okay, Kim, so I'm going to ask you the big question because you put it in your slide.
Okay.
You said that revenues are not keeping pace with our expenses. So, what areas, how do you recommend, in what areas should we look at to deal with that challenge?
Well, you have to look at both sides of it. You have to see how can you produce revenues. Non-resident tuition is a great way we're growing and producing extra revenues there. We have to be creative on that side, and then we have to look at our expenses and...
Well, I understand we have to look at our expenses. Which expenses?
Well, obviously, the biggest part is our salaries and benefits, so we have to keep an eye on those, STIRS and PERS. I mean, all of those benefit things, the health and welfare will help us a lot this year, but we have to look at salaries and benefits and all of our discretionary spending on capital outlay.
Okay, thank you. Nice job.
Thanks.
I don't think you have any other questions, so we really appreciate it, and thank you for being concise as well. Okay, so I think we need a motion. Oh, we have it. Sorry, we do have, we have a motion from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Prendergast. Probably no further discussion, so let's vote on the item. The tentative budget is approved by unanimous trustee yes vote, seven to zero. We are now at Board Agenda Item 6.2, South Orange County Community College District Public Hearing for the Authorization to Form the ATEP Facilities Corporation. Before we have that public hearing, Acting Vice Chancellor Kim McCord will provide an introduction. You're now here.
Yes, it's like magic. All right, the agenda item pertains to a public hearing to allow the district to form a new nonprofit public benefit corporation as authorized by Education Code's Sections 72670 and the following California Code Regulation Sections 59259A and C, as well as SOC CCCD's Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 3610. This new California nonprofit public benefit corporation has been advised by District Council to manage business activities relating to the district's real estate assets at ATEP. There are two other board items that relate to this public hearing, Items 6.3 and 6.4. Agenda Item 6.3 will approve the formation of the ATEP Facilities Corporation as an auxiliary organization of the district, and approval of the Master Agreement and Asset Management Agreement, setting the terms upon which the auxiliary will provide services for the benefit of the district. Item 6.4 is the item presented for the board's approval of the covenants, conditions, and restrictions, the CCNRs, for the operation of common elements shared by the educational and commercial occupants of ATEP, as well as to allocate maintenance responsibilities and common expenses, and to implement and enforce consistent project-wide design guidelines, use restrictions, and other rules and regulations governing development, maintenance, and operation of ATEP. If you have any questions throughout the public hearing process this evening, Victor Negret and I are here to assist.
And Victor's, and I see him in the back of the room. Does the board have any questions to staff to assist with their understanding of this Seeing none. Board Item 6.2, Public Hearing for the Matter at Hand is now open. Comments are not to exceed two minutes. I don't think we have any additional comments. Public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the Board of Trustees? 6.2 is concluded. We now move to Item 6.3, Approval of the Formation of the ATEP Facilities Corporation and the Master Agreement and Asset Management Agreement for this auxiliary organization of the district. And we need a motion and a second to approve 6.3. We have a motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Jay. No further questions. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by seven to zero trustee yes vote. Now that the formation of the ATEP Facilities Organization has been approved, we may move to the last item related to the new district auxiliary organization. This is Item 6.4, South Orange County Community College District Approval Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions for ATEP. So, I think we need a motion and a second. All right, we have motion and a second for approval of 6.4. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. The item is approved by a seven to zero trustee yes vote. We are now at Board Agenda Item 6.5, Public Hearing for the Irvine Valley College Behind the Meter Battery Energy Storage Project Energy Service Contract. Before we have that public hearing, Acting Vice Chancellor Kim McCord will provide an introduction.
All right, here we go again. The agenda item pertains to a public hearing to allow the district to enter into a contract for an energy service contract pursuant to the requirements of California Government Code 4217. This code permits public agencies to enter into an energy service contract on terms that its governing board determines are in the best interests of the public agency. This process entails using a formal request for proposal, RFP, process. There are two other board items that relate to this public hearing, Items 6.6 and 6.7. After approval for the use of this approach, each item will be presented to the board on its own merit and relative to the project-specific findings. Agenda Item 6.6 will authorize SOC CCCD on behalf of Irvine Valley College to enter into an energy service contract for their Behind the Meter Battery Energy Storage Project. And Agenda Item 6.7 is the item presented for your approval for the vendor contract, which is an energy service contract with Hybrid Electric Building Technologies West Los Angeles One LLC for the Irvine Valley College Behind the Meter Battery Energy Storage Project for an estimated monthly fee of $4,492 for 10 years and an estimated contract value of $539,040. If you have any questions throughout this public hearing process this evening, both Brandy Delena and I are here to assist.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions to staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Trustee Prendergast.
Maybe it would help, so there's a cost for the company, what is the cost savings potential by having the batteries? Do we know that?
I'll ask Brandy to come up and respond to that.
Hi, how are you this evening? So, within the different resolutions, I believe it is in 6.8, sorry, 6.7, on your Exhibit A.
Oh, it's on the next one, that's why I didn't see it in this one.
Yes.
I got it. So, we save more than we spend.
71,000. We do.
That's, that's perfect.
Okay. That does it.
Did I answer your question? All right. Any other questions? Okay, Board Item 6.5, Public Hearing on the Matter at Hand is now open. Comments are not to exceed two minutes. No comments, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the Board of Trustees? 6.5 is concluded. We will now move to Item 6.6, Adopt the Resolution Number 18-16, authorizing entering into an energy service contract for Irvine, for the Irvine Valley College Behind the Meter Battery Energy Storage Project. We have a motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Wright. No further questions, so let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote. Now that the resolution is approved, we may move to the last item for the Irvine Valley College Energy Service Contract. This item is 6.7, South Orange County Community College District IVC Behind the Meter Battery Energy Storage Project Award of Energy Service Contract with Hybrid Electric Building Technologies West Los Angeles LLC for the amount of $539,040. And we have a motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions on the approval of this contract? No? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. The contract is approved by a seven to zero trustee yes vote, and move ahead. Okay, Item 6.8, Saddleback College Science, Mathematics, and Engineering Building Renovation Project, Saddleback College Technology and Applied Sciences Assessment and Irvine Valley College Structural Analysis Condition Assessment Services Agreement. And we have a question from trustee Wright.
It's really the science math building. It's the SM building, ever since I've been here. It's not the science math and engineering building, so we've always called it the SM The SM building, science math building.
Instead of, what was it listed here?
Science, math, and engineering.
Oh, okay.
That's just a correction.
All right.
Just a minor thing.
Technical correction. Sounds good. And we do have a motion to approve the item, and we have a second from trustee Jay. Any other comments or questions?
I just, I just have one question.
Sure, trustee Wright.
How long is it going to take us to do this?
We're splitting it in two. The TASD building is expected to be complete around September this year, and the science math, science math building and the IVC buildings would be around December timeframe.
Okay, so we'll get it done within the next six months?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because I'm anxious for that. That science math building needs some work.
We're going to find out exactly what work, yes.
I can tell you.
All right. No further questions? Let's go ahead and vote on 6.8. The motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote. 6.9, Saddleback College Stadium and Site Improvement Project Construction Management Services Agreement with APSI Construction Management. We need a motion to approve the item. We have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Wright. I don't see any questions, so let's go ahead and vote. And the motion carries by seven to zero trustee yes vote. 6.10, Amendment Number 1 to Sales Contract Between the Corporation of the Presiding Bishop of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints and the South Orange County Community College District on behalf of Saddleback College. We have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Wright. Do we have any questions? People know, I think, know what this is regarding? Okay? It's right at our entrance, you see it every day. So, let's go ahead and vote on the item. The motion carries by seven to zero trustee yes vote. 6.11, Authorization to Utilize Foundation for the California Community Colleges and Trustees of the California State University Contracts. Motion trustee Lang, second from trustee Jay. Let's go ahead and vote. And the motion carries by seven to zero trustee yes vote. 6.12, Access Control and Security Systems and Hardware, I don't know if they say CMAS or CMAS Agreement with Blue Violet Networks LLC. We have a motion trustee Wright, second from trustee Witt. No questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. And the motion carries by seven to zero trustee yes vote. 6.13, Resolution 18-14 to Close County Treasury Fund 41 for the Facilities Capital Outlay Fund. So, a motion to approve, there is a motion trustee Witt and a second from trustee Jay. Let's go ahead and vote. And the motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote. 6.14, Authorization to voluntarily dissolve the ATEP Foundation and authorize the interim chancellor or vice chancellor of Business Services to proceed with these actions necessarily necessary... Chancellor or Vice Chancellor of Business Services to Proceed with these actions necessary to dissolve the nonprofit corporation. We have a motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Jay. No questions, so let's vote. Motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote. 6.15, we have a whole host of Board Policy Revisions in here, a lot to review, and this is a motion to accept for review and study this evening. So we have a motion from Trustee Milchiker and a second from Trustee Wright. The only, I know it's for review and study, there is a lot to review here. I do encourage all of the trustees to go through with these policies. There's some, I noticed some wordsmithing that needs to be done, that's not, that's more technical in nature and grammatical, but then there's some substantive issues that I think just need to be reviewed. Trustee Lang.
Yes, to that end, I did review the BPs that are before us and talked to our Acting Chancellor about that today. We'll plan on providing her with both the wordsmithing and other changes that I had identified and so that they can take that under consideration for when this comes back for a final approval for the Board.
Good, I mean, there's some minor things like you assume the chancellor is going to be a male, change from he to he-she. We know that we're not, we have a female chancellor coming in.
We were interchanging Board President and Presiding Officer.
Right.
And I think that needs to be considered a little more carefully in some instances.
Yes, there's something, yeah, there are a lot, there are a few things in there that we can only extend our meeting time once in an evening. I mean, I'd like for that to be the case, I mean, believe me, but to put that in a Board policy doesn't make a lot of sense to restrict us to that. So go through it. All right, so we have a motion and a second, and let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries to accept review and study these various Board Policy Revisions.
So if I may, Board President Jamal, if the Board members, if you guys have any changes, if you would like to give them to me pretty quickly so that we can incorporate them before we bring them back to the next meeting, I would appreciate that. Thank you, perfect.
It won't be now, but I will do it and I will redline suggestions so you see what I'm suggesting.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, so now we're on to 6.16, Academic Employee and Classified Administrator Personnel Actions.
Board President?
Yes.
May I just point out and acknowledge the three contracts that you will be approving tonight in accordance with our compliance under the law? I want to point out that the contract for Esther Graves puts her at a range 20 step 1, $130,992, and a monthly salary of $10,916. She will be the Assistant Dean of Health Sciences and Human Services Director of Nursing. Is she here today? Yes, thank you. Welcome. The second contract is for Dr. James Chris Lepian Christiansen. He will be serving as the Acting Interim Dean of Social Science while the interim dean, Christina Henkel, is on maternity leave. And he will be set at range 22 step 3, an annual salary of $159,204, a monthly salary of $13,267. And the final contract today, tonight, is for Tony Leopold, who is a retiree who is returning, and his contract for the interim Athletics Director is a range 20 step 8, a monthly salary of $15,358, $7,348 monthly. He is limited to 19 hours per week as a retiree of, added a new, I think, PERS. That concludes my statements.
Thank you for that. Oh, we have a motion from Trustee Milchiker to move the item and a second from Trustee Jay. I just wanted to add, it's, we did change our practice a few months ago to add, or maybe it was a couple of years ago now, to add stipend information in here. And I, you know, got some clarification just on total dollar amounts of stipends, general fund stipends through May 31st to the district is over $2,102,490,000, that's in general fund stipends that we paid out, 1.4 million from the unrestricted general fund, and then $676,000 from the general fund. These are for faculty stipends in, through May 31st. Okay, did you have a question? Did you want to ask a question? Okay. All right, so let's go ahead and vote on 6.16. The item carries by seven to zero trustee yes vote. 6.17, Faculty Conversion to Canvas, the onetime stipends to ratify Academic Employee Personnel Actions, and these stipends are additive to the stipends that were referred to in the previous item. Are they included? These stipends were included in the, I didn't know that. So the, so the stipends, the total amounts, the point of clarification, so the total amounts that I read off of faculty stipends in the previous item, 6.16, are inclusive of the Canvas stipends? Okay, thank you for letting me know, I wasn't aware of that. That's okay. They were included in that? Yeah. Okay. All right. So is there a motion on the faculty stipends for conversion to campus? There's a motion from Trustee Jay and a second from Trustee Milchiker. Any questions, discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by a six to one trustee, six yes votes and one no vote. Now on to 6.18, Classified Personnel Actions. Any changes?
No changes.
No changes to the item? It's a motion from Trustee Witt, a second from Trustee Milchiker. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote on the item. The motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote. And last of our general action items, the CSEA Successor Agreement, tentative agreement to approve that as a three-year successor agreement. We have a motion from Trustee Witt and a second from Trustee Jay. Any questions or comments on this? Nope, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote. We are now on to our reports, Saddleback College and IVC Annual Accreditation Reports. 7.2, Staff Response to Public Comments from the Previous Board Meeting. 7.3, List of Board Requested Reports. 7.4, the Community College, California Community College Trustee Student Election, the Member Election 2018. 7.5, Facilities Plan Status Report. 7 points, Trustee Wright on 7.5.
I just had a couple of questions about how we're doing as far as the stadium and the site improvement, how's that moving along?
We recently received DSA approval for the increment one, that's the grading portion of the stadium, and we can move forward with that now, so that's where we're at with the stadium.
Are you going to have it completed by August of next year?
Today I can say yes to that. We have had some delays at DSA with regard to the approval of plans, primarily as a result of the large amount of bonds in the state. They're reviewing a huge number of plans down there, it's taken a little bit longer. Today, yes, I said increment one, increment two is still in at DSA, we need that to come out relatively quickly in order for me to be able to continue saying that.
Okay. The second thing is, how's the ATAS building coming?
It's going great. We just got the three proposals from the design-build entities with the designs in them, and the Evaluation Committee is reviewing those now and getting ready to provide you with a recommendation for who to move forward with on that.
And when's the, when will those building, when will that building be completed?
Um, sorry, I don't have that off the top. Complete construction August of 2022.
We can't move that up?
Well, after we have the design-build team onboard, there's a possibility they might see things we're not seeing. I'd be hesitant to say yes to that question until after that time.
That seems like a long time, that's, that's four years from now.
It's four years.
Okay.
Just to break it down, it's one year of design, an estimated one year for permits, receiving the permits, and then two years for construction. That's what, what those four years are.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Wright. I think, hold on, Brandy, you have another question coming, Trustee Witt.
I think you asked me this, Brandy, but in our notes here, we have complete working drawings, so because of today that you've got a commitment for the design, so it's not pending anymore, right?
Which one is this?
It's for ATAS.
Oh, we received the proposals, and so it is, where are we at? At the advertised for the pending item that you're discussing?
Yes, it's the complete working drawing, September 2019.
Right, and that's the year that I was just describing. It takes about a year to complete the design portion of the work, so we'll get started. We hope to come to the August Board with a recommendation. That means we can get started in September of 2018, and then one year from now, those drawings would be submitted to the Division of the State Architect.
Is it ever possible for them to finish it in less than one year, like six months?
Six months isn't a realistic expectation, given the complications of the building. We, we always, you know how you say in construction, measure twice, cut once? So the design would be the measure part. If we tried not to measure twice, then in construction, we would spend, it's likely that we would spend many more dollars.
I understand that, but this is a new building.
It is a new building.
Yeah. You know, my great desire to get this project going.
I understand.
And I just really believe that we need to cut months off, and if we can finish it in three and a half years or three years, I'm just pushing for that. I really am.
I will convey that to the group when we do select and make it very clear that that's your objective.
Well, I think it's all of our objectives.
I understand, yes.
And I think it may be possible, I think putting the year in there for the architect is a conservative approach, you know, we might be able to squeeze the architect for nine months. You know, I've seen buildings completely designed and submitted to DSA in nine months, but any quicker than that, you may not get a valuable product. You may have a lot of constructibility issues if you try to push them faster.
But Chancellor, we have decided on where it's going to go.
Yes.
I don't want to be doing all of this and then all of a sudden say, oh.
Correct.
What part of this campus is it going to go?
What part?
Yeah, do we know for sure? Because I've heard different areas.
Right, it's going in the parking lot, and I believe it's, it's lot seven? No.
It's the tennis court location.
It's the tennis court location, so. It's kind of in a parking lot, but it's where the tennis courts are.
Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I'm going to take the opposite view on this. I don't want to rush them if it means we're going to have another building slip down a hill. I want to do it right. I, I don't want to rush something and then be regretting it later. Do it right. And if it takes a year, I'm sorry, but do it right. And I don't want to spend more money later because we didn't do it right. That's, that's my opinion.
No one's suggesting not to do it right. I mean, the, having an expedited, or not, having a tighter timeline does not mean cutting corners. I mean, I think you understand that.
But it sounds like, it sounds like cut corners to get it done quickly is what it comes across as, and that's what I'm making sure we're not doing.
I sure don't feel that way, but Trustee Lang.
I totally agree with what Trustee Prendergast is saying in terms of making certain that we do these right, because inevitably it costs us more money at the end when we have to try and fix things later on. On the other hand, I think what you're hearing is a greater sense of urgency by all of the Board members. We've allocated a lot of money to these projects, to these various projects, and for some reason, we just don't necessarily see the traction or the sense of urgency to try and get, get things done. And I think we're all maybe a little frustrated by that. So I, that's, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Agreed, in terms of the investment.
All right, thank you, Brandy. So let's move on to 7.6, Monthly Financial Status Report. And 7.7, the OPEB Trust Fund. Okay, moving on, the reports from the Administration and Governance Groups that have not reported yet. So I will start out with the Saddleback College Academic Senate, looking very spirited tonight, Blake.
Thank you very much, it's great to be back after a two-year hiatus. First of all, congratulations to Trustee Milchiker for being certificated. Congratulations to Trustee Wright for your 50th anniversary, that's fantastic. And thank you to Anne Marie Gable for your service as interim chancellor. We're glad you're not going away, you're just scooting down the hall. Thank you, that's it for tonight.
All right, thank you. And you are not Mark Blethyn?
No, I am not Mark Blethyn.
And have you taken over the reins?
I have taken over the reins, I am younger than Mark. I am not as thin as Mark. And I'm going to let that third criterion just go.
Oh. Come on, you're all, you almost had it.
I am Kurt Meyer, and I will be the Faculty Association President for the next two years, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
Hey Kurt, congratulations.
Thank you very much. And there's no report tonight, and I think my family and friends and people who know me best appreciate it when I talk less than two minutes.
Mark was brief, I'll give him that. Okay, thank you very much. And now we're on to the IVC Academic Senate.
No report.
Okay, and I think we're on to Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services.
No report this evening.
Okay, thank you for that. And Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, Cindy Viscaill.
I'm going to end the streak. Let me first welcome Kurt Meyer and Blake, Blake back, and thank you Kurt for taking over the leadership of the Faculty Union. I am, no, I'm going to enjoy working directly with you. I also want to thank the Board of Trustees for approving the tentative agreement with CSEA tonight. Scott Ferguson-Green, the President of the Union, and I know very well that the Board has an independent ability to vote yes or no as they, and I thank you for voting yes tonight. And I thank Scott for his patience in waiting for the Board to approve it before we send it to the membership. So related to the TA, we want to thank you for that. I also want to specifically thank the members of the negotiating team for CSEA. A couple of them are here tonight. First, let me say the chief negotiator for CSEA is Danny Torres from the Field Office for CSEA, and Scott Ferguson-Green, the President of the Union, Dean LeBeau, Melissa Klimowitz, who's the Chief Union Steward, Maria Nunez, who is here tonight, and Nathan Quoc is in the back. And also, if I can say this name correctly, Matt Fudisakayakal. He is also the Union Steward for the Orange Field Office, so we appreciate his assistance. And the team for the district, Kim Wittes was with me at the table, the Executive Director of Human Resources, Davit Kachatrian from IVC, and Christian Alvarado from Saddleback College. Specifically, I'd like to thank and acknowledge Scott Ferguson-Green for his leadership as the CSEA President. I think both sides listened to one another, and I felt that CSEA was tough but fair in assisting us in reaching an agreement, so I want to thank both parties for that outcome. So I want to thank both parties for that outcome. So thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Very good. Good news.
Can I have no report?
Okay. Acting Vice Chancellor of Business Services has no report. And I think we're on to the IVC Classified Senate.
Yes, I actually do have a couple of things to report. On June 6th, our professional development committee had their annual summit. And this year it was facilitated by Cessaher Johnson, who is the director of student life and equity programs at IVC. And our keynote speaker was Dr. Fontenella and it was very, very well attended. We had, I think, 50 people come, so it was very nice. And also on June 14th, at the Classified Leadership Institute in Ventura, this year, Dr. Rockmore was honored as the outstanding, outstanding, I can't remember the whole title of the award, but he won an award and it was really good. So there was about, there was about eight of us, eight, nine people actually from IVC who attended. And we were this close to winning the Spirit Award. I think we lost by like two points for lack of a mascot. I know, so next year we have to have a mascot. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And last but not least, CSEA president, Scott Green.
First of all, I want to thank the Board of Trustees for approving the successor agreement. Never do we ever want to take for granted the fact that the board would rubber stamp all the items that they have to consider. The board does a very good, deliberate and careful job when making decisions on a lot of items that come before you. So when you leave tonight, the sound in the wind that you will hear is some of our members breathing a very good sigh of relief because of the fact that you approved the successor agreement. Because I wanted to assure them that the board would carefully consider the successor agreement, but not take them for granted. So we thank you for that. Thank you interim chancellor Gable. I know that you're very much a part of running the numbers so that we can actually have things to really look at. I want to thank the district team with Dr. Viscaill, Kim Wittes, Devit Kachatrian, and also Christian Alvarado. One of the things that really made this particular negotiations not only different, but certainly something that we felt on our team was the fact that they were very much prepared and the fact that they were very willing to meet us in a lot of respects when we did disagree to try to find a common ground. And I, this is my fourth negotiating, negotiations in a row. And yet I found this one out of the four to be the most smooth-running negotiation simply because of the team that met us and decided that even when we disagreed, let's find a common ground. We did not have many caucuses to decide, oh, let's, let's have a strategy and see how we can come back. Because the one thing about both our teams is the fact that we wanted to talk, we wanted to work together, we wanted to find common ground, we wanted to be able to find how this agreement could be satisfactory to both parties. And I can tell you, on CSEA's side, a lot of my members are smiling tonight. Thank you very much.
Well, Scott, I just want to say on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we're very pleased to see that it was a smooth process and that the outcome in terms of the substance worked out both for us and, and for you and your members. The classified employees are integral to what we, we do here every single day. And so we're very pleased that you and Dr. Viscaill and your, the rest of your team, some of whom I know, some I don't know, but I know you and you're their leader. And then chancellor Gable, it's, we're very pleased to see this agreement move forward and good work. Thank you. All right. That concludes the meeting and good night, everyone.